Let's begin our final meeting of the calendar year. Since Jimmy's got his recorder on, we'll stand up. In fact, let's go ahead and stand now. We'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, this final meeting of the calendar year 2020. We thank you for how you have watched over us during this challenging COVID year. We just pray that things will quickly improve in that category in 2021. We pray for your continued blessing on this county, all of the employees, all of the taxpayers that support the county. We pray for our first responders in this particularly difficult time of year, our hospital workers, the entire medical community who continues to deal with the COVID situation and the long hours and the lack of much of a holiday season, I would imagine. We just ask for your, again, blessing upon this entire community. Also want to pray for our commissioner that's retiring, for Al Riddle. We thank you for his service over the past eight years. And we just ask that you would bless him and his wife in the coming year, whatever he chooses to do, whatever his next endeavor. Father, we ask that you be with him and bless him. And we just, again, thank you for his service. We turn this meeting now over to you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, again, we'll call this meeting to order. This is our final regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Titus County, today being the 28th day of December 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. And we will begin item one. This is public comment time. If anyone in the audience would like to address the court on anything that's not on the agenda or just a general comment, you can certainly take advantage of this time now, or you may wait until a particular agenda item comes up. Anyone else? All right. We will move on then to item number two, considering possibly approved minutes. This is from our last meeting, two weeks ago, December 14th.
Make motion to approve it.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number three, reports from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll begin downstairs with Commissioner Fitch.
All right, we've been patching roads to get through some of these winter months and burning a couple of big brush piles that we cut trees and removed trees from the roadway through the summer months, servicing equipment and maintenance and registering vehicles and staying busy, along with, as we call, we put in a couple culverts for people's driveways. We repaired a soft spot where the road got bad, so out on 2850. So I have several people on vacation this time of year, and we've been hit hard with COVID. I had the COVID and was out for three weeks, and then we had three out of my four guys that have been home with COVID-related quarantine. And it's been, it's been a challenge, but we're going to make it.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddle?
Well, last week I didn't have anybody working, and I had one working the week before. So we've patched and got limbs out of the road and just done errands. It's been dull around our place.
Is that because they were on vacation, hopefully, and not sick?
Yeah, hopefully, they were on vacation. None of them were sick, comp days and vacation days.
Good deal. All right, Commissioner Applewhite?
Well, we finished up putting culverts in week four last. That's about 11 of them we put in over the last three weeks. And like I said, Al, this past week and this week, they're all on vacation.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Well, I've had, last week I had, or part of the week last week, I had one guy that was working. He got some signs and all put up. We'd had a pretty good list of signs that were down, and he got them made and put up and done a little patching while he was there. Then they're off the rest of, they were off the rest of the week and then this week. So we're just trying to get ready to start up the new year and get ready for summer again.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number four, considering possibly approve a resolution submitted by the Mount Pleasant Economic Development Corporation related to financial assistance for Cox Concrete Products. Before I talk specifically about Cox Concrete, I want to, this is a new item. In the past, you'll recall, we've had opportunities where we participate in tax abatements when the Economic Development Corporation is trying to assist a business. Nathan Tofoya, our Economic Development Corporation Executive Director, believes that there will be more and more opportunities, such as the one we're going to briefly discuss here, related to Cox Concrete. Cox Concrete, as you know, out on 67 is outside of the city limits. And basically, the Economic Development Corporation, which is funded primarily by the city of Mount Pleasant, through also some tax benefits that were voted in by the voters, hmm, gosh, 20 years or so ago, I guess. But here is a situation where the Economic Development Corporation has decided to give some financial assistance. In this case, I think about $30,000 to Cox Concrete Products to assist them with an expansion out there that will produce more products, more jobs. And so Nathan feels like it is appropriate that we begin a new policy of whenever they approve a project that is outside of the city limits, that is in the county, that they should get our approval. Now, I can't think of a situation where the county would not be supportive of economic development efforts expressed by the EDC, but in the event that there was something, I think that it's appropriate, and as well as Nathan, that we be given an opportunity to give our blessing and our approval on something. So that there, you know, in other words, we can't make decisions that affect the city necessarily, and he feels like it's appropriate if they're making a decision on a business that they're going to support and, in fact, financially assist, that they should get our approval. And along with the help of an attorney, he has drafted a document, it's just a two-page document, that basically discusses that, and we'll fill in the blanks on each one as they come along. So, and I'll give you some excerpts on that document here in just a second, but let me tell you a little bit what's going on at Cox Concrete. There's going to be a $300,000 investment, excuse me, let me back up. At our monthly board meeting yesterday, the MP EDC Board approved a financial assistance package of $30,000 for Cox Concrete Products' expansion. As discussed, there are a few more steps that need to happen before this is finalized. Get approval from the Titus County Commissioners' Court to operate in their jurisdiction, and then parties on a performance agreement. There's a $300,000 investment that's being made by Cox Concrete. That's not the amount of the financial assistance, that's how much they're investing. A 4,000-square-foot manufacturing space, a new batch plant, and up to 12 new jobs. I will restructure the agreement as a forgivable loan. Once we receive receipts for purchases and quarterly Texas Workforce Commission reports satisfying the job creation requirements, he will then write a letter of forgiveness for that amount. So that makes sure that Cox Concrete abides by what they have agreed to do and provides proof that they have done that. So, again, thank you for your continued investment in our community. I'll be in touch soon. That was what he was saying to Ryan Cox out there. And Ryan, many of y'all know him, is back working out there and bringing new, young life into that, into that great company. So that's, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Nathan is not here. I didn't feel the need for him to be here. I felt like this was an easy decision for us to support a good local company that operates within the county. So what I would like is for your approval to sign a resolution giving counties support on this project.
They're going to give Cox $30,000 cash?
Cox Concrete.
Not, not tax rebates?
Not tax rebates, right.
They're going to actually give him cash to invest?
Mm-hmm. A little bit, little bit different on this one. Again, you may see more of this in the future, and in this particular case, they decided this was an expansion. Again, it's bringing new jobs, it'll add additional tax base, it'll benefit the county. And so, yes, this is something different than they have typically done. Okay, did I have a motion? I heard something. Motion to approve this by Jimmy Parker?
Second.
Second by John Fitch. Any discussion or questions on this? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, consider and possibly approve the early hiring of two legal assistants by District Attorney-elect David Colley for the period of December 28th, 29th, 30th, 31th, which will be paid out of the DA forfeiture fund in the amount of approximately $1,165. At our last meeting, we used those DA forfeiture funds to pay for DA-elect Colley's accrued vacation pay. Here, he wanted to get his two new legal assistants started as early as possible. He has hired, he has identified those, we know who they are. In fact, they're probably over there right now, but he wanted to get them started here before the end of the year. So he's asking for permission to do that. He received permission from his boss to do that, and he is asking us to also authorize him, because it's not quite his term yet, four days ahead of that, but he is asking for the ability to go ahead and hire and pay these, and it'll be paid out of the DA forfeiture fund.
Make motion to approve it?
Motion to approve. Commissioner Fitch? Second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six, considering possibly approve the Johnson-Keno subdivision. All right, who would like to speak on this first? If we need, if we need Clint Bane, we'll get him up here. Do you want to speak on this, what you know about it?
I have looked over the plat, know where it's at, been by it. Everything looks in order. I've talked to Mr. Keno and also Jill Johnson about it, and everything looks in order to me. I can't find anything, and I think Clint will agree with me on that.
And Pedro came to me back early on. In fact, he probably started this back three months ago and wanted to be sure he was doing everything right. And he's got, anything you want to tell us about this?
Now, that one was pretty simple. It had roads running, two roads.
Plenty of electricity, plenty of power, plenty of water, and plenty of acreage available for his, for his OSSF. Okay, all right. And so he is going from, the total development out there was how many acres? I don't remember.
Hold on. Let me tell you, I'm looking at you.
Three acres. So he's created, he's divided this up into three one-acre lots. And again, all of these have frontage either on FM 1,000 or County Road 4340. So he's met the minimum size requirements. There's development all around that area out there, and he has provided the appropriate documentation here, the appropriate plats, and appropriate number of copies. So I don't think that there's anything that's not easy to determine on this one. It looks like a legitimate expansion. He bought a few acres out there and is subdividing those down into lots that he can sell for housing development. Total, total of three lots developed out of this, lot one, two, three. Do you have any questions? Fine. If not, ask you if you want to approve this.
Is that off of 1,000 going to Center Grove, Pleasant Grove?
Yeah. Northwest, northeast corner.
Our own, well, three, two of them, two of them, I guess it is, our own 1,000. In other words, our own going towards Pleasant Grove, then.
Well, one of them actually fronts 1,000 and 4340. It's right there in the corner. The next two are just north of that, and they front on FM 1,000.
Yeah.
Houses already going up.
I make motion to approve it.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye. Along that same topic line, consider and possibly approve a replat of lots one and two in the Pleasant Meadows Estates Phase One subdivision to reconfigure the individual lots. This is a memo from Clint Bane about these. Let me briefly read this to you. This one is even simpler than the other one. We're just resizing two lots within an existing area. Last week, I met with Stansel regarding proposed replating of lots in Pleasant Meadows. The Stancels are current owners of record of lots one and two. Lot one is a 6.18 acre tract with one house on it. Lot two is a five-acre tract without any improvements at this time. Both lots one and two join a 51-acre tract that belongs to the Stancels that is to the west and is not part of this Pleasant Meadows Estates subdivision. Additionally, lot one joins a 12-acre tract to the north with a six-acre tract, both of which belong to the Stancels and are not part of the Pleasant Meadows. In other words, so it's surrounded here by Stansel-owned land. What Justin is proposing is a reduction in size of lot one, becoming lot 1R, and the creation of lots 1RA and 2R, which will basically create a clear access to his home on the adjoining tract at parcel ID 6100 via lot 1RA. Then we're going to enlarge lot two to become 8.67 acres. Lot one will be reduced from 6.18 down to 2.34. I went, I went over the local subdivision requirements with them. I feel this is simply the replating of property that they own within the existing Pleasant Meadows subdivision. To my knowledge, an overall site plan for onsite sewage was not a requirement back in '94 when this subdivision was first developed. Where normally a site plan would be required for the subdivision of land, in this instance, however, I do not see the need for an overall site plan to be submitted. At this time, the only true, the only lot really affected by these changes is lot 1R, which already has a home and an onsite sewage plan in place. Should lot two have had a home already, should lot two have had a home already constructed on it, or if one was constructed as it is today, only a soil and site evaluation would be required for the permitting of an onsite sewage plan? Anything else you want to add to that?
Just, the only thing, if something comes up later, should they decide to...
Subdivide even further?
Subdivide even further, then I think it's going to be time to start over the contraction and do a full site plan. Because the lot, 2R, in theory, would probably only be able to accumulate lots, then consider lots. And even if that 1R is excluded and added, and created a subdivision lot, so if that's what...
They'll have to deal with the subdivision later on if, if they decided to do that.
Yes.
Okay. So here, they're, they're creating, as I recall, looking at it and understanding it, they're creating, you know, a more practical access to one of the pieces of land that's included in here that really was, did not exist before, coming in off of the county road.
Right. What they have hacked is denisements, where they built their new house, and this is giving them actual ownership to that strip instead of just being a...
Very good.
And then also, should they be able to sell that 1R, it's going to be probably a little bit smaller and probably an easier sale than it was at the...
Okay. We have adequate road frontage. We have obviously existing power there. We have water that's available there. So those are the main things that we're looking for here. So here, we are accommodating just a resize within an existing subdivision. We're not creating a new, we're not bringing in any additional acreage. Any questions on this? If not, I'll ask for your approval so that we can get that done for them.
Make motion to approve it?
Motion to approve. Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, consider and possibly approve a professional services agreement for a licensed court interpreter, Mr. John Kriegel. John Kriegel has been the interpreter for the district court for a good while. As some of you know, there were some issues that came up six months or so ago, and really we came to the realization that we didn't have a good, clearly defined court interpreter contract with anyone. And so with Barbara's gracious help and a lot of time spent by her, a document was prepared that was sent out basically asking for any court interpretation services by any company that wanted to participate. In other words, we kind of said, okay, no longer does, you know, Kriegel never had exclusive rights by contract, and so we felt it best to go out for bids for anyone that was interested in possibly becoming a licensed court interpreter that served for our county, specifically Titus. Now, they may serve other counties as well as part of his, as part of their work in our, in our area, such as Kemp County, and that's up to them to develop their own agreements there. But we did get some responses. How many, Barbara? Four, five?
Four or five.
Four or five. These were scored, much like you did with the Lochner Right-Away Agreement. And after it was all said and done, and I saw all of these, and I believe that they, we had some quality folks that applied, but for various reasons, some geographically limited because they were so far away, some of them lacking the experience we wanted, some of them possibly higher fees or whatever. Over the course of several months now, it's been that they've been working on this, they came back to John Kriegel. This new document, I believe, does away with some of the unknowns and uncertainties that existed before. For example, you know, when is mileage paid? This one doesn't even pay mileage. When does the district court coordinator need to let the interpreter know that court has been canceled, if there's a previously scheduled day in there? And so I believe that the way that this document is drafted, and by the way, it was drafted by John Coburn, he spent a good deal of time on this as well. And so between Barbara's assistance and John Mark drafting this up, and my discussions with Mr. Kriegel and with our two district judges, I believe that we've got a good document here that clarifies how much is charged, when it can be charged, what minimum daily charges are. There's not mileage in here. When can the court interpreter be called off? Because he's charged, because he charges on an hourly basis, we don't want to run into a situation where we schedule court for weeks or months in advance, and for whatever reason, such as COVID, court is called off. We don't need him. We certainly don't want a situation where we have a misunderstanding and he charges us for time that's not actually spent here. So, again, I believe we've got a good document here. I sent you all a copy of that, and in order to begin the new year with a good, solid contract, I will ask that you all consider approving this professional services agreement for a licensed court interpreter between Titus County and Mr. Kriegel. This document also allows for, if Mr. Kriegel is unavailable when our court needs him, that he will be responsible for replacing himself if he is sick or whatever reason comes up where he is not able to be where he is supposed to be. He will make sure that somebody with equal skills at the same rate is provided to the county for us. That was one of the things that they wrote in at the, one of the last adjustments that we made here. So, again, the judges would ask for your approval on this, and we will now have something we have not had before, and that is a well-defined document.
I'm wondering...
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering...
Will you, can you want to come up here, here?
Sure. Now, we, I believe they changed it one time to start having all the divorces on one day, so that we didn't have them all throughout the month or whatever. Is there any way that we could schedule having an interpreter just one day a week or once a month, so that all the interpreter that's needed would not be all month long? I wonder if we have him come at 9:00 and don't meet him again until 4:00, if it's hourly? Are you going to pay him for eight hours when you only use him maybe for two hours? I don't, I don't have a copy of the contract.
He's got some half, half-day minimums in there, and I think that's a good, legitimate question. And I don't know much about how things operate over there, but I would like to know more about what you're talking to me about here. This court is not going to be in charge of scheduling him. All we can do is fund that position. And we did back off of what we funded them, but anything that we can do to help them think of ways to minimize the expense, which has grown astronomically in the last few years, I think that we should. So in response to your question, I don't think that this is something we can impose upon them, but I'll be glad to have a conversation with them if you'll give me a little more background on that subject, because that's something I don't know about.
I'm willing to share with you some issues with that situation.
Okay.
If you're going to vote to hire him right now, then you're not changing the contract, you're just going to hire him, and you know the issues that we've had. So I don't know how soon y'all need one, but those are some issues I think we should cut down on the pay the taxpayers have to provide them. I don't think we need him 20 days out of the month, but that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, he is still being used right now. He's just, he's working for the county outside of a contract at this time. And again, he was selected as the one that was most capable. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Do I understand that Mr. Kriegel was billed Titus County or Morris County for time that he wasn't in court?
That was looked into. I believe that was, that item was resolved. Now, there was some time there where court had been scheduled and court was canceled, and he was paid. So the answer to that question is yes, and that's what this document tries to eliminate. But there was not, when it was all said and done, the allegations that were brought by the person that investigated all this did not amount to what was originally thought.
What did it amount to?
I can't quantify that for you.
I met with Judge Rost and Judge Sausier, and Nathan said that everything was legitimate that they knew of as far as the charges, that he was charging the county, and that the people they looked into, these other companies that came forward on this and filled out our application that Barbara sent out to everybody, he was as reasonable as any other, their charges are, some were higher. His prices are reasonable. This contract's going to help make sure how he charges. We know how he charges. They know how he charges. how he charges to kind of curb extra expense. And Judge Ralston said that, get ready, they're not running at 100% yet because of COVID. So as the year progresses in '21, it'll slowly speed up. He said they're going to finally get, try to get caught up on some court, and they'll need him quite a bit once this COVID dies down some, and it's going to be expensive for a little while catching back up. So we've got that to plan for as we budget.
Who looked over that contract before you did?
We've all looked over it, and
Who did?
All the commissions, we got copies of it.
John Coburn, John Coburn drafted it.
Coburn drafted it, then the district judges look over it. They're kind of the ultimate, hey, this is what we want, this is our court, so we're just like any other court.
But let me, but let me go back to your question. There were no charges that were ultimately denied. And there are going to be situations where it's not, you know, when he walks in the door, he punches the clock when he walks out. If he comes up here and literally something is settled there on the spot, we don't need you. There are stipulations in here where he does receive a minimal amount of pay.
Who wrote the contract that John Mark wrote? John Mark wrote?
John, John Coburn, using, using an existing document from Gray County as a base starting point.
I got one more I'll put. How much money are you talking about? $10,000, $100,000?
We've got, no, we've got him approved this year, 50 or 55 thou, 50 or 55,000. I think the request was for more than that. It's, it's fair, it's fairly substantial, and we
How many counties have got one?
Well, again, we don't, I, more than just within our district. I mean, he has the ability to, to work outside of our district, but with this document, he's pretty well committed to being available to our district, Camp County, Titus County, and beyond that, I don't know which.
Was it Morris County that first started looking into this, into the building for time that he wasn't?
Was it Morris or was it Camp?
Camp.
Camp County.
Camp.
Yeah. There was a lot of discussion there. You're, you're absolutely right. But in the, but in the end, after looking at everything, there were, there was no monies that was ultimately denied to him.
I remember what I was thinking about. Oh, the thing is, it wasn't here that got billed for, he also billed for mileage. I just heard that.
That was an allegation that was not found to be correct.
It was in the bill?
That's what I was told.
I was billed. I was wrong.
He was there.
So Sheriff, we got Dr. Bill told mileage for that as well here?
I have bills showing that he charged Camp County to come from Tyler to Camp, and it was already in Pittsburgh, and charged this as if he was coming from Tyler, although he didn't have any mileage or
Got it.
And I think what this contract's going to do is kind of help curb some of that. All we're going by is both judges said, we need to pay that bill. We find that it was legitimate to pay it, so I will say this, all those court costs are going up every year more and more, so it's not, nothing to look forward to.
The judge said, what I'm here to say, are y'all catching that? The guy didn't make a trip up here, and he billed some mileage for that, and then you're telling me that the judge has looked at it and said, and they approved?
Yeah, because we weren't contracted, whatever the wording was, how they had an agreement, if he wasn't canceled or something, he got paid so much or something. Well, now that's changed somehow.
Well, there's, there's, mileage is not included in this, in this new document.
And the judges that looked at it and approved it were?
Judge Ralston, Judge Saucier. So apparently they're thinking this is normal, this is what we do.
And John Mark looked over that as well.
I think this is a case where
I'm not sure on that.
We've always done it that way, became the norm, and
Now we're changing.
Needs to stop.
So if you steal a little bit from the county, you get rewarded with a contract. Is that the new deal? But anyway, we got Fitch handling it. It's okay.
Any other questions on this? This is an important deal. All right, what you want to do on this?
Make a motion to approve it?
A motion to approve this professional services agreement for a licensed court interpreter, John Kriegel. Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch. All right, I'm going to second it, just to call this to a vote. All those in favor of approval of this contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have two. Opposed?
Aye.
We have three. All right, this does not pass. We'll take this back and start these discussions over and figure out what needs to be done here. All right, thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to another consultant agreement. This is with H.W. Lochner for right-of-way appraisal and acquisition services and utility relocation services. Talked about this over many meetings over the last several months. We finally agreed upon not only hiring H.W. Lochner and Gary Luba, but we approved their fee schedule. And so once that is done, there has to be some kind of a document to evidence the agreement between the two. You've been provided a copy with that previously. Mr. Coburn spent a good bit of time, as I did, looking over this. Excuse me, the fee schedule is included as part of this document. And as you'll recall, some of the fees that are charged by Lochner may or may not come to pass. We, we approved fees in a worst-case scenario. We're hoping that those fees come less, but nonetheless, we do have, and this is a standard agreement that Lochner provided for us, Mr. Coburn has looked over this. Any questions? It's a long document. The fee schedule comprises most of those 30-some-odd pages, but in order for them to officially begin, a document like this is always signed with their clients, including TextDOT. So this would be a document like they use when they do work for TextDOT.
I make motion to approve it?
Motion's made to approve this professional services agreement with Lochner, made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
All right, item number 10, discuss, this is not an action item, discuss the need for a replacement on the Titus County Appraisal District Board for the unexpired retiring members position. Bobby Parr, as I mentioned to y'all a couple of weeks ago, is retiring from this position. He's been on there for 10 years, and he has said it's time to move on, allow somebody else to do this, and so they have let us know we would like a nomination from the county to fill this unexpired term. I don't have any names to present to you right now. I want you to start thinking about this, and if there's any names that you have, let's discuss them at the next meeting, but I believe we do need to be prepared to make a selection by the next meeting. So I dropped that bug in your ear and asked you to be thinking about somebody that would be a, a good replacement for Bobby. Bobby's been a good board member for many years. Any questions about that? Okay, that brings us to item 11, approve oral and written reports of county officials. That's been provided for you before the meeting by Barbara. There's the official copies.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve this report is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this will need your signature here in just a moment. And following that, item number 12, consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve it?
Motion was made by Commissioner Fitch, and I heard something
Second.
Close behind there, second by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got a couple of budget amendments for item number 13. This is 2021, number 008 and 009. Let me read you the very first one that Barbara's provided. Sheriff Ingram has been housing federal inmates due to the fact that the Fannin County jail is full. He currently has about 30 federal inmates and is anticipating eight additional during the next few weeks. Further, the county may be asked to house an additional number of inmates, up to 45. The county receives $45 a day for housing these inmates. Sheriff Ingram estimates he will need two to three more jailers in order to house these federal inmates. So along with that additional revenue, that generates additional expenses, but this appears to be a good, a good deal for the county. The original revenue budgeted in this item was for inmates from other counties. The Titus County jail has housed very few inmates for the local counties around us for this year, so Sheriff Ingram anticipates housing very few inmates, county inmates from other surrounding counties. Therefore, the name of this item has been updated to be inmate housing-dash-federal. The line item for jailers reflects the estimated salaries for three jailers plus benefits. Total estimated revenues for housing 45 federal inmates for one, for one year is $740,000. Sheriff Ingram estimates he'll generate approximately $600,000 in revenues from housing federal inmates. The budgeted revenue will not be adjusted further until Sheriff Ingram receives additional information on the estimated number of inmates to be housed. So this adjustment amount of $129,750 is a adjustment between, again, this is, that's the amount, 129 represents the three plus benefits. Is that right? That's all three of them in there, 129, 750. All right, so $129,750 to take care of the three additional. He said two to three more, we're assuming three more. That'll include their salary and benefits. We're not making any adjustments to the revenues yet until we have a better idea of what that's going to be.
And we already got seven million six former over there, we got 37.
Good. And that brings, that brings you to a total of, of what?
Around $50,000.
No, about how many fed, fed prisoners do you have right now?
We've got 37.
37 right now.
37.
Well, that happened quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, that's first, that's the first one. Any questions on that one? You got Sheriff here?
Why do we get federal prisoners prosecuted?
Where do we get them from?
Or why?
Why? Sheriff?
The federal jail, they accuse us.
Huh?
The federal jail, they have their own jail.
Why don't they get rid of some of the border patrol? They're not doing their job anyway.
No, they don't have jail, they don't have prison for the, they don't have jail, so the floor is prisons, they have two local jails, and so they just contract that.
What is the time they have to stay in a local jail?
Hey, if they stay there for a month to a year, you know, that's getting in court.
So we give the penal system, okay. We turn around and catch a federal prisoner, but then we turn around and take him to a county jail for the taxpayers to pay for, or somebody for a while, the pets to pay. Then we send them back to another federal prison?
But if somebody from downtown, they can
Explain this penal system, I mean, especially if you're looking at the local, if you're looking at the news and see how well the police departments are doing with the black guy with the cell phone, the shooting, I mean, you know, and all these, you know, I mean, it's not really looking good, and I just wanted to ask some stupid questions, you know, with it. This is good, this is good.
Well, in this case, it is a benefit to Titus County. Sure we, I'm sure we pay for it somewhere else.
Yes, we will.
All right, the second is related to the professional services that we'll be paying to Lochner, H.W. Lochner. And Titus County has about $3.68 million held for the county's portion of the widening of 1735. Again, our job is to pay for right-of-way, pay for right-of-way acquisition services, pay for the utility relocation that we are obligated to pay for, and also to pay our consultant to negotiate the lowest fees that we can pay for utility widening. And all we can do right now is use a best guess according to Lochner as to what these total fees will be, and so we are moving some of this money that's held in reserve to be able to prepare for paying professional services for right-of-way acquisition and appraisal, professional services for utility relocation, and those two figures are $477,000 and $349,000. We have professional services, which is title transfers and closings on those properties, right-of-way acquisition costs, and utility relocation costs. The lion's share of that is $1.5 million for utility relocation, and then about $537,000 is the actual cost to buy the land from the landowners that will make up those, that acreage there up and down that road. So let me run down these figures once more. Professional services for right-of-way acquisition, $477,000. Professional services for utility relocation, $350,000. Titles and closings, $293,000. And then right-of-way acquisition, $537,000, and utility relocation, $1.5 million. So we are going ahead and moving that money out of the reserve account that it's been in, getting ready to start spending that money, and hopefully they begin the process of negotiating buying right-of-way quickly. So those are the two budget adjustments, number eight and number nine.
We're also going to get that grant that we extended.
At the end of the project, when all monies have been spent, we've got a nice benefit coming from the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, about $300,000, that, again, won't be paid until this project is completed. So let's move some money and be prepared to start spending it here this, early this year.
Make a motion, we approve of amendments?
Motion to approve these two amendments. Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number 14, sign pay orders and approve payments of bills.
Make a motion to pay our bills?
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 15. All right, item number 15, closing comments. I've got a couple here. For those that will need to be sworn in, new, new, new or existing elected officials that start January 1, there will be a swear-in ceremony Wednesday, the 30th, two days from now, courtroom B, over in the annex, 11:00 a.m. 11:00 a.m., courtroom B, across the street. And since you're here, I'll ask, have you done anything about arranging for a bond?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Well, we have, we'll, at the next meeting, we will approve bonds for elected officials, just as a reminder for those of you that need to renew your, your bonds. All right, Commissioner Parker?
I have nothing, Judge.
All right, Commissioner Applewhite?
Nothing.
Commissioner Riddle?
Well, I just want to say thanks to all the people that voted for me, and I can honestly say this has been the eight years of total shock, shock to my system. I'm so surprised at how, how corrupt government is, and I'll, I can say honestly, I know this is probably, just like Titus County, the same thing in Austin and the federal government. It is scary as hell. I'll tell you right now. But thanks again for the people that supported me. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitch?
We have a plaque for you from the county. Mr. Riddle, we appreciate it, and eight years of service to Titus County, we want to present you a picture made with you up here. We thank you, sir. Read it, read it to us. And appreciation for eight years of service to Titus County.
Why are you giving me this?
I just ended up making sure it got made for you.
Okay, well, hell, I don't need that from you, okay? I need it from the other people.
From all of us, from the county.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, I just wanted to pick it up.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think it's to Fitch.
No, no, it's totally from the whole county.
Well, can we get a picture down below?
Yeah.
Where would you, where would you like it?
I'd like it from the space of light up here. Oh, okay. Glare. Yeah.
You want it on, you want us on that side of it? On that side of the glass?
Yes, I very would. All right. All right, just anywhere in the short of our front, get ordered, you got it, man. We can move the glass. Right there in front. You want to move the glass? We can move it. Really? No, 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 we still got the uprights, we do. Okay, don't worry about it. How old you not build, buddy? Come up front. All right, just level up, boys. All right, this is only a stage of Mr. Riddle's last meeting, that's right? You must be right. Okay. This is going to be hard, and I want somebody to act like they're really happy that he played. Look here, huh? Good. Hey, Smiley? Hey, just, I always remind my, rest of y'all, get back here somewhere. I don't want many people that I can get. Behind the glass? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can go up and, you can go up right where the commissioner said. No, hey, I'm impressed, I'll go here, man, she got He can't see us, boy, there. Yeah. Look here. Come on, let's go up here. Get up, go up, I don't know if you're talking, see? Come on. He can't see us, boy, there. Yeah. Look here. Everybody look up here and say aye. Aye, two, three, one more time, two, three. Al, thank you very much, buddy, I appreciate you. Thank you.
All those in favor, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite, and a second by?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.